Today is Monday, December 9th, 2024. This is our regular Board of Education meeting for Believe It or Not, it's December. Please stand and join us in the pleasure. The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, Dr. Rika.
Good evening. If I could ask you to join us in a moment of silent reflection in the memory of Patricia Riley, high school Spanish teacher from October 1966 until she retired in February of 1985, and Lauren Ashley McCormick, former student, graduate, White Plains High School, class of 2010.
And next we'll have our student attendance report. Dr. Rika.
Do you want to do announcements first? Just announcements at the board, sorry.
Okay. Next we'll move into announcements from board members. I think Jessica, you and I, we were able to attend the PSCA Holiday Celebration on Saturday. Great turnout, and we had a great time. Lastly, we were also together at the Friends of White Plains event, and as I always say, no one has better friends than White Plains. They support our program, and it's just really fun to go and support the event knowing that it supports our students. Anything else?
Yes, so I also went to, this is during this past month, I went to the college signing day where three White Plains High School students were signed for playing D1 sports at three different colleges, which was really cool. Gavin Townsend at Wagner College for baseball, Lily Demattis at Niagara University for D1 tennis, and Ava Gagliani, I think, for the US University of Florida, South Florida, for D1 softball. So that was really exciting to be able to attend. And I also went to the Ridgeway Turkey Trot, which was a big event at Ridgeway. I think it's their biggest fundraiser of the year, and it was a lot of fun. It was a beautiful day, and it was full school participation. It's a PTA event. The teachers did a really fun race wearing those inflatables, and nobody fell down, so that was pretty good. And Mr. Suji won the race. There were medals, and snacks, and bubbles, and a DJ, and lots of fun. And I think the school raised up to $50,000 with that one event, so congratulations to them. And I also went to the unveiling of the We Go Swing at Delphino Park, which is a swing that anyone of any ability can ride on. It's apparently the first one of its kind in Westchester, so that was really cool to be able to attend as well. And I think that was it.
Okay, any other announcements?
I'll make some announcements. I just came from Highlands before I was here. They were doing an internet safety awareness sponsored by PTA Council, and what I heard, at least for the beginning, was quite powerful. I went to the Fall Play at the high school. They did Romeo and Juliet, so that was very enjoyable. I also attended the Friends of the White Plains Schools' pre-Thanksgiving reunion. They had a lot of alumni there, and Friends of White Plains, great turnout. Rosemarie mentioned it's December already. I went to the White Plains Middle School eighth-grade winter concert and finally got in the mood for December and the holidays, so that was very enjoyable. Keenan Bean has been doing a series of webinars on school law. They are our council, and we really appreciate that they do this. So they had done one on APPR updates, evaluations of classroom teachers and building principals, and they have another one coming up pretty soon. There was a regional program. It was the Lower Hudson County of School Superintendents, the Duchess County of School Boards Associations, the Rockland County School Boards Association, Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. They had a regional program with a presentation by Michael Rebel from the Center for Educational Equity, and he talked really clearly about foundation aid. Kane was also there, as well as Dr. Rika, Dr. Vakara Teich, and Hunter Hyde. So that was a really informative event. Westchester Putnam School Boards Association had a community conversation sharing about social media, and Dr. Rika and I were both there on the Zoom session. They also did an advocacy meeting. They're finalizing their legislative advocacy positions. And finally, the New York State School Boards Association did a webinar on the 2025 legislative and state budget, and it's sort of a preview, and they did send an email with a recording if anyone missed that. It was really well done.
I think we did Hall of Fame too, right? Yeah, we all, yeah, a number of us.
So I'll just quickly add, on this Saturday, December 14th, is the Holiday Craft Fair here at the high school. I think they're saying they're gonna have about 90 different vendors. It's from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and that's always a good time with food and a lot of the great last-minute gifts to buy for your loved ones.
And spirit work.
And lots of spirit work.
Are we good? Okay, so now we will go to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my great pleasure to introduce our ex-facile student Board of Education members for their monthly update.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to share with you today the wonderful initiatives and activities taking place across four of our schools this December. As we reflect on the past month, we see an inspiring commitment to fostering a sense of community, kindness, and collaboration that is truly remarkable. Each school has embraced these values in their own unique ways, and yet there is undeniable or there are undeniable similarities in how these schools are working together to create environments that nurture not only academic growth but also emotional and social well-being. Across Church Street School, MAS, Ridgway, and Post Road, we see a common thread. Each school is prioritizing inclusivity, empathy, and community engagement. From promoting acts of kindness to educating students on environmental responsibility, these schools have fostered an environment where students feel supported and empowered, whether it's through school-wide events, partnerships with local organizations, or special focus themes like empathy, kindness, and inclusion. Every effort demonstrates a shared dedication to building strong, stronger connections within school communities and beyond. At Church Street School, the focus on empathy this month is reflected in both their curriculum and extracurricular activities. For example, Church Street School kicked off the month with the We Future Recycle Program. Through classroom presentations, students learned about the importance of recycling, composting, and reducing their environmental footprint. This initiative not only helps students understand the ecological impact of their actions but also fosters a sense of responsibility for their community and planet. The We Future Recycle Program provides an excellent opportunity to build environmental consciousness in students, and Church Street School is clearly committed to sustainability. This month, Church Street School has also been embracing empathy as their trade of the month, and the school-wide activities tie beautifully into this. Their Book of the Month is a hat for Mrs. Goldman, a story that teaches about kindness and understanding. Church Street School will have a school-wide read aloud of this book during Cozy Day, encouraging all students to reflect on empathy and warmth. In addition, students will have the opportunity to add pom-poms to a large winter hat whenever they show acts of kindness. This visual representation of goodwill will not only serve as a reminder of how small acts of kindness can collectively have a huge impact but also bring the whole school together in a meaningful way. Furthermore, Church Street School has organized a glove and hat collection to support local families in need, reinforcing their commitment to community service and care. It's wonderful to see how Church Street School continues to engage students in giving back and creating a culture of empathy. Looking ahead, Church Street School is excited for some wonderful events in the coming weeks. They are eagerly anticipating the Winter Spirit Week and Winter Concert, both of which will allow students to express their school spirit and creativity. Additionally, the school is thrilled to welcome the students from White Plains High School's Education Pathways Program, further strengthening the bond between the high school and the elementary school while giving students a unique opportunity to connect with future educators. Over at MAS, November was equally busy and was an equally busy and impactful month. The theme of being an ally, not a bystander, permeated many of the school's activities. With students engaging in conversations around inclusion, acceptance, and tolerance through classroom circles and discussions, MAS has done a fantastic job of addressing these important social issues and helping students understand their role in creating an inclusive environment. This focus on empathy and community building is also evident in the school's strong partnerships with families. MAS hosted a series of workshops designed to support students and families covering topics like Title I reading, math, and E&amp;L services. These workshops are instrumental in ensuring that all students have access to resources they need to succeed. MAS's environmental efforts have also been impressive. In partnership with TrexTech, MAS launched a plastic bag drive. The goal is to collect 1,000 pounds of plastic, which they will be recycled into benches for the playground. So far, the school has collected 227 pounds, and it's inspiring to see students rallying around this cause, learning about sustainability, and taking actionable steps towards making a difference. This project is a perfect example of how students at MAS are learning the value of community engagement, environmental stewardship, and teamwork. Another exciting initiative at MAS has been the school's mittens tree project. For Kindness Month in December, the school participated in a One School, One Read of the book, The Mittens Tree, where students, families, and faculty were all encouraged to donate mittens and hats to children at Blithdale Children's Hospital. This school-wide effort to spread kindness and generosity is a beautiful tradition and an inspiring example of how small gestures can have an enormous impact. MAS is also continuing to nurture the development of future educators. This month, the school hosted their second annual Pathways Program, welcoming 25 students from White Plains High School who are pursuing careers in education. The school spent the morning observing, or the students spent the morning observing classrooms, participating in lessons, and engaging with staff and students. This hands-on experience provides invaluable insights into the teaching profession and allows MAS to continue its meaningful partnership with the high school. Moving to Ridgway School, they've had some heartwarming events that have brought the community together in powerful ways. The Veterans Day breakfast and parade was truly a special event. Over 40 veterans were honored, and students presented each veteran with a letter of thanks for their service. The parade, filled with songs and gratitude, exemplified the school's commitment to teaching students the importance of honoring those who serve. Events like this foster a sense of respect and appreciation for others, which is essential in building a caring and empathetic school community. Ridgway also had a successful Turkey Trot fundraiser, which rated much-needed funds for the school. Thanks to the efforts of the PTA, the funds will be used to enhance the school's courtyard and provide additional learning opportunities. One of the highlights of this event was the strong community partnerships that were formed, with local businesses supporting the cause and parents coming out in large numbers to show their support. Over 300 parents attended, which is a testament to the strong sense of community at Ridgway. The PTA also installed a new mural in the school's hallway, celebrating the inclusive beauty of all students. This mural will serve as a daily reminder of diversity and unity that makes Ridgway such a special place. Ridgway has also continued its tradition of buddy reading during American Education Week, where older students paired up with younger students for shared reading activities. This initiative encourages relationship building across grade levels and provides students with the opportunity to share their love of reading. Finally, at Post Road, students, or Post Road, November was a month of exciting engagement. During American Education Week, the school invited parents to participate in classroom activities and join their children in the learning experience. This hands-on involvement has proven to be excellent, an excellent way to strengthen the connection between home and school. Additionally, Post Road hosted a family literacy night, which featured STEM-themed story walks. This innovative event combined literature and hands-on activities such as building bridges and flying paper airplanes, while families read books like Andrea Beauty by Andrea Beauty, like Ada Twist Scientist and Rosie Revere Engineer. It's great to see how Post Road is blending creativity with education in ways that inspire both students and families. The school also celebrated World Cultures Day, where classrooms were transformed into different countries. Students had the chance to learn about various global traditions and cultures, and the day culminated in a kindergarten parade of flags, which displayed the countries of origin of many of the students and their families. This event helped instill a sense of pride in students while promoting cultural awareness and acceptance. In addition, Post Road exceeded their Miles and Smiles fundraising goal by raising $20,000, and in celebration, the staff and students enjoyed a fun-filled roller skating event. This was a great way to celebrate the school's sense of community and spirit. The month wrapped up with Inclusive Schools Week, where the schools embraced empathy and inclusion by dressing up to celebrate everyone's uniqueness, reinforcing the importance of welcoming and accepting school culture. In conclusion, each of these schools are doing amazing work to support and uplift their students and families. Whether it's through environmental initiatives, kindness campaigns, community-building activities, or cultural celebrations, Church Street School, MAS, Ridgway, and Post Road are all living examples of what it means to create a truly inclusive and compassionate school community. Thank you.
To continue, at East U, several memorable events have taken place recently. The Veterans Day Assembly was a heartfelt tribute to local veterans. Students performed patriotic songs, read poems, and honored White Plains High School alumni veteran, Davon Smith. Dr. Rika and Mayor Roach attended, addressing students and families with inspiring words. Following the assembly, students and veterans connected over breakfast, providing an opportunity for students to express gratitude and learn about the experiences of these honored guests. In celebration of the end of quarter one, students enjoyed an after-party, filled with live music, games like Goggle Ball, Box Ball, and Volleyball, along with a variety of snacks. This event served as a wonderful way for students to unwind after their hard work. The Friends Giving Student Luncheon was another highlight, with students voting on the menu, making the event collaborative and personal. The luncheon was filled with laughter, gratitude, and a true sense of community. Additionally, a bullying prevention and online safety assembly led by Officer Ashley Garcia emphasized kindness, digital responsibility, and the lasting impact of actions both online and in person. Looking ahead, the school is excited for the upcoming winter concerts on December 11th and 18th, Avid Day on December 19th, and the Winter Wonderland Student Luncheon on December 19th as well. Highlands has also been busy with engaging events. In late November, seventh-grade students participated in a community-building volleyball tournament, where teams faced off against one another, and the winners competed against the faculty team. The event created a positive and fun atmosphere, fostering student relationships and teamwork. In December, Thomas Grimes presented to students on internet safety, addressing important topics such as cyberbullying, identity theft, and long-term effects of online behavior. Parents also had the opportunity to attend the same presentation that evening, receiving valuable information on how to keep students safe online. The school's Holiday Helpers Event is underway, helping families in need by providing gifts and food for the holiday season. Community members are encouraged to sponsor a snowflake to bring joy to local students and their families. Further, an eighth-grade volleyball tournament will take place under September 11th, continuing the community-building efforts and promoting school spirit. White Plains High School hosted a climate change action symposium and competition in November, organized by the STEM Club. The event featured presentations from local community groups focused on innovative solutions to combat climate change. The Rye Nature Center enriched the event with a nature station exhibit, and Mayor Roach opened the event with a welcoming address. Sai Dorira, a climate change activist, delivered an inspiring keynote speech as well. Additionally, the Principal's Advisory Committee recently met to discuss school lunch offerings and explore strategies for ensuring that all students have access to nutritious free meals every day. During the meeting, students suggested new options, including a variety of beverages and vegan alternatives, and brainstormed ideas to promote school lunches more effectively while encouraging greater student feedback. On December 5th, the school held the Eighth Grade Parent Information Night, where prospective families and students toured the building, met with administration, and learned about the diverse course offerings at White Plains High School. Further, the Key Club has been actively involved in the holiday season, partnering with Lifting Up Westchester for a toy drive, which supports teens ages 14 to 18. In addition, donations for Thanksgiving provided over 45 families with gift cards for holiday meals. The Hot Chocolate Run on December 13th this Friday is another exciting event hosted by the Key Club. In athletics, the girls' swim team had a successful performance at States, with Saskia Eichmann placing fourth in both the 50 and 100 free. The hockey team also had a strong showing at the Guy Matthews Memorial Tournament over Thanksgiving, winning two out of the three games. Winter sports are now in full swing, with modified tryouts taking place this week. Lastly, the Harry Jefferson Memorial Basketball Tournament will be held on December 13th, where the court will be dedicated to the late Sue Adams and current coach Spencer Mayfield. The event will bring the community together to honor these individuals and celebrate the school's athletic achievements. That is all for this month's report. Thank you.
You've heard me say this before, there's no way that I could do as good a job. Thank you so much for, again, another great month of updates, and you know, I think really illustrating all the tremendous things that happen all throughout the school district. There's so many moments to point to with pride, both led by our students, engagement with our community. It's just so great to hear, so thank you both very, very much.
Dr. Rika, the girls mentioned the Educator Pathways Program.
Yes, yeah.
So they're now, I know they're taking courses up at the high school, but they're also visiting the elementary school?
Yes, the students who are in our education, if you're not familiar with the Education Pathway Program, we are working on growing our own faculty members here right at White Plains High School. Students can earn and are earning college credit, as well as experience in the classroom, and they are now transitioning into classroom observations and visiting elementary school classrooms and learning from cooperating teachers. It's really, it's a fantastic program. I should also just mention, since we're talking about it, big thanks to Senator Shelley Meyer, who's also Chair of the Education Committee, for a $15,000 bullet aid grant that is earmarked directly for the Educator Pathway Program. So it's thanks to Senator Meyer, of course, and congratulations to the program. Again, welcome, everybody, and happy holidays. There's so many festive events, concerts, celebrations that are gonna be taking place all throughout the month. Hopefully you'll be able to join us at many of them. I know Friday night's gonna be an exciting night as well, and a very meaningful night as we dedicate the court here at White Plains High School. It's also gonna be some great games that are gonna be played that evening. Wrestling tournament had its second annual, wrapped up its second annual, sorry, the wrestling team wrapped up its second annual tournament this past weekend, with our Tigers performing very, very well. The team is going strong, and big thanks to all of our coaches and parents and guardians, and of course, our wrestlers for supporting that program. I also want to thank the PTA Council as well. The program that's available, it's happening right now at Highlands, is highlighting the importance of understanding all of the potential pitfalls of digital interactions, social media platforms that can exist for our students and for parents and guardians, all of us, to learn as much as we possibly can in real time about how those landscapes are consistently changing and shifting, and providing ways, real practical ways, to be able to keep our children safe and secure in a digital landscape. So thanks, of course, for the PTA Council for leading as well in that area. And our cell phone policy is coming along really well. We were just talking about this. Surveys, thank you very much again, are being distributed here at White Plains High School, eliciting or soliciting feedback from our student body related to how we should approach cell phones in school. There was a, and continues to be, a big push related to banning phones at the high school level. This Board of Education and many in Westchester County, as well as around the state, are looking at a more nuanced approach that has our students as partners in that process in identifying appropriate times to be able to engage with our devices, as well as no-go times, like instructional time. And that's the work that's taking place here, and I think we're up to over 200 respondents so far, and that'll keep happening, and then we'll come back to the Board of Education's Policy Committee for review in a couple of months, so that's good news. Madam President, and members of the Board, on tonight's agenda, we have a Capital Projects update, and we have the team here. Thanks again, gentlemen, for being here this evening. But what I'd like to do is, if it's okay, I'd like to shift the Church Street School Transportation Update above and attend to that update first, because I know we have members of our community here as well, and I want to be respectful of your time. And we also then, before we move into the Capital Projects Update, can move into public participation and to allow folks who might want to address the Board of Education to do so and not have to wait until later in the meeting, so is that okay? Great. Okay. Good evening again, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present an update here to the Board of Education as well as the community. And let me start out by saying, and many of you have heard me say this already, this is a challenging situation that we find ourselves in, and what I'm going to attempt to do this evening is kind of walk through where we were, where we are, and where we are going to be looking toward the future. And we're really focusing this evening's conversation on Church Street Elementary School start and end time. We have an existing challenge, and our challenge is that the cost of district transportation has increased dramatically. We anticipated that the costs would go up, and they went up even more than we could have anticipated. So we conducted an audit in the 2023-2024 academic year in preparation for the expiration of the present contract with our service provider. During that audit, we anticipated an increase of roughly 30% to 40% over the total cost of what we were paying for transportation in that existing contract. The market costs and the actual costs far exceeded that and got up to around 50% to 60% in terms of what came back during the request for proposal process. Now, folks have asked, is there, could there have been a way that those costs could have been reduced at the request for proposal process? And unfortunately, the answer to that question is really no. That process is governed by law, and so the specifications for the expectation of the service are put forward by the organization, and then qualified bidders have the opportunity to bid on the work. And so when the proposal came back, those costs, or those cost increases were really beyond our control, as they would be any organization's control. So we were already above what we had anticipated would have been higher costs when that proposal, when those proposals came back. And so now we have to identify or figure out a way to save costs associated with those increases. So what do you do? Well, you could reduce expenditures elsewhere in the organization to compensate for the transportation cost increases, right? You cut programming, cut purchases, you cut services, right? You could ask the White Plains taxpayers, you could ask the community to support piercing or exceeding the tax levy cap to address the shortfall. It's important to remember that in order to be successful in exceeding the tax levy cap, you have to achieve a supermajority of the vote. So it's not a regular majority, you have to receive 60% of the vote. And we could also look at adjusting the transportation service tiers to achieve the efficiencies that were identified in the 2023-2024 audit of the services, and then that would reduce the overall cost. It wouldn't take care of all of the cost increase. Still about $5 million that we have to attend to, but it would reduce the overall cost of the service. When we're looking at our fiscal stability and the overall health of the organization, it's not just today, it's not even just next year, but it's three, five, seven, 10 years. We are trying to keep an eye on a constantly moving target. We're trying to predict to the best of our ability what costs are going to be in out years. the best of our ability what costs are going to be in out years, so that we can plan appropriately to preserve and enhance services, program, and opportunities for our students. None of us ever wants to be here talking about a situation where we have to reduce personnel, or where we have to cut program, where we can't add another modified sports team if we need it, where we can't offer before and after-school assistance, extracurricular assistance. None of us ever wants to be in those situations, and some of us have lived through them, 2008, 2009, 2009, 2010, you've been there, you know. We want to make sure that all of the decisions that we're making related to costs today are going to be decisions that will increase our likelihood for sustainable programming in the future, not become a liability that we would then have to necessarily come back to for again in the future and say, we can't afford to do this. But it's not easy. In the long-range plan for prior years, and this is 23, 20, I'm sorry, 23, 24 to 27, 28, we updated it to reflect the estimated budget shortfall. So we knew, we knew that we were going to be dealing with, remember, we were factoring in based upon the audit recommendations. And so we're looking at ways to address that $5 million shortfall by a number of different avenues, but what are the drivers? Well, they're mostly things that are outside of our control, just like what we experience everywhere else in the world. We have no increase in property tax assessments, and that's due to the increase in payment in lieu of taxes, outside of our control, understandable, all important to the overall health of the community, to growth and development, all important, but outside of our control, and it does affect our tax levy cap. State aid is conservative, at best conservatively projected at 2%. Now, we did hear just recently that the governor talked about not reducing the Save Harmless provision in foundation aid, which is really welcome news, and important news throughout the state. But White Plains is not a Save Harmless school district, so it doesn't really change the calculus for us in terms of what we can expect in the governor's executive budget that's due to hit right around January 1st. So what are we doing? We're being conservative in our prediction about any increase to foundation aid, and foundation aid is your money coming back to you, right? It's Albany redistributing state tax dollars to support education, and so we're advocating always to ensure that White Plains receives its fair share of your tax dollars back to support your children's educational experiences. And we were just at, as you mentioned, the conversation with Mike Robell, and we know that foundation aid is going to get another look throughout the state of New York as it needs, and we will continue to advocate for White Plains because our needs have changed, and we should be getting more of our tax dollars back to support our program, but we can't count on it. So we have to build on what we can count on. Significant increases in health insurance and property insurance and pension costs, all of these costs are beyond our control, they're all market-driven costs, we're experiencing them outside in our other aspects of our lives as well, so we know what those cost drivers are. And again, we planned for those cost increases, we just didn't plan for the additional cost increases that came above the 40%. So these estimates don't include changes for the new transportation agreement, and what we were talking about this evening in terms of the tier for Church Street Elementary School, again, Church Street is the school that presently has the schedule that starts earlier than the other four elementary schools, 30 minutes earlier than the other four elementary schools. It's about $2.8 million, we'll call it $2 million, a year, every year, for the duration of the contract, right? It's not an insignificant expense, and it's a significant service, meaning we understand the importance to the families at Church Street Elementary School of the present schedule. We understand that, we respect it. But we also know that we have to make decisions now that are going to put the school district as a whole, including everybody at Church Street, including all of transportation, including all of the programs and services that our students presently have. And those are those decisions that we have to look at right now. We're updating the long-range plan for '24, '25, and '28, '29, and we're looking at budget development for this coming year. We're also exploring additional ways to save money, to maximize our resources, but they're not, they're not going to cover the increased cost to maintain that tier of busing at two, additional $2 million as part of the development process. What are we looking at? We're looking at retirement incentives, lease revenue for space that may be available within the district to be able to lease, to realize revenue through that way. We're constantly looking for efficiencies in the organization, areas that we can realize additional savings and reallocate those savings elsewhere into the organization, and the use of fund balance, and we have to be very careful with this, because we want to make sure that anytime we use fund balance, it's going to stretch as long as possible because it's one-time only. It's not much different than you'll remember when we received the federal dollars related to COVID relief, and the White Plains City School District utilized it to upgrade all the school HVAC. So every school in the White Plains City School District will have air conditioning, and we did it with one-time-only money, right? We have to make those kinds of investments with one-time-only expenses, we have to be really mindful of that. We need, of course, needed to communicate with the Church Street Elementary School community, as well as the greater community here in White Plains. And we started out by sharing the challenge with the community, we did that in September, about a year out from when any change to the start and end time of the school would take effect. And we received feedback in a variety of ways, and we're still receiving feedback, and I suspect we'll receive more feedback this evening, and it's welcome. We solicit additional feedback through feedback surveys that were distributed for four consecutive Fridays. They were done so in a mixed method approach, they were not done so in a check-the-box, and there was a purpose for that. In the mixed method approach, both qualitative and quantitative, we were able to receive information related to what parents and guardians, community members wanted, but also they were able to share if they wanted to what they needed. So if this change did have to happen, how best could the school district support you and your family to the extent that we're able, as an organization? And so those surveys went out every Friday for a month, and the feedback was good, over 300 respondents. Now, you might ask, were they unique responses? We don't know. We didn't track them, there was no attempt to identify if they were new every, every week, and that's because the feedback was meaningful, even if it was coming from the same people week after week. We wanted to hear it, we needed to hear it, and we needed to figure out a way to try to address both challenges at the same time. So we looked at the, we looked at the survey data, and I'm going to share with you the outcomes of that in a moment, and continue to seek avenues to provide additional support for parents and guardians and our students, as we also navigate the fiscal reality and the challenge associated with the increased cost. And then we're going to continue to remain open to learning from the community and receiving feedback from our community members, as we always have. And make no mistake about it, we've heard a lot from the Church Street Elementary School community, but we've also heard from members of the greater White Plains City School District community as well, related to the conversation, and that's important as well, because all of these conversations, while they may seem like they rest in one singular area, it touches everything within the school district. Transportation in a sustainable and efficient manner is critical to all of our children all throughout the school district, and so it is a community-wide conversation. What did the feedback tell us in broad strokes? Highly negative is the majority, 54% of the respondents said this is terrible, and they gave a lot of feedback as to why they thought it was terrible. And then you had folks who also told us that, you know, low or minimal impact to them, and that's, that's fine, or even no impact, or believe it or not, you had folks say this will actually work out better for our family. And it tells us something I see every day, is that every single family has unique needs, every single family, while their commonalities, has a different set of circumstances that they're all working toward. So for us, what can we do? We can try to serve everybody as best as we possibly can. What were the concerns expressed? Again, mostly related to employment, related to parent and guardian work schedules, right? And before and after-school services, wraparound services for children. All completely understandable, absolutely. You know, we said this at the beginning when we first started this conversation, any discussion about a change to the family routine, to the school day, it's a big discussion, you know? I, I have a seven-year-old and an 11-year-old, I know what the morning is, and I understand that a change to the routine poses a big challenge, and so for us, we are trying to figure out how do we navigate that, and how do we also provide the supports here at school to try to make any, any potential change, not easy, but at least more tolerable. Community members gave lots of feedback. Align all of the elementary schools with the Church Street School schedule, make everybody start earlier, right? It's reasonable, you can understand, if you're, if you're thinking about your family, as we all would be in that situation, you would think about that. Explore an expansion of before and after-school services, especially at Church Street. One of the things that we heard really, really loud was, this year, we, we had wait lists at some of the schools. We have to make sure that we don't run into that challenge in serving not just Church Street Elementary, but all of our elementary schools, but certainly Church Street Elementary if we're talking about changing the construct of the start and end time by 30 minutes. We had people say that the school district should pay for before and after-care services for all of, all of the children throughout the district. Unfortunately, while I'd love to be able to tell you that I would want to do that, even if I wanted to do it, we couldn't. That's not something that the school district can do, but what we can do is we can work with providers, we can work with providers to try to make sure that the costs associated with before and after-care services are as low as they possibly can be. And we can also work with providers to try to identify ways for flexibility in the service that parents and guardians are purchasing. So maybe I don't need service five days a week, maybe my family just needs two days a week, and maybe on one of those days, it's in the morning, and one of those days, it's the afternoon, as much flexibility as possible. Increase taxes. Here's the cap, an increased taxes to preserve the current structure. That's the recommendation. Again, reasonable, if that's what you're thinking, and the impact to your family is going to be that great, you can understand it. Cut, cut programming somewhere else, or cut something else. I'm not going to tell you what to cut, Joe, but cut somewhere else to keep or get $2 million extra dollars to be able to keep the paradigm intact. Of course, that creates a number of other concerns and challenges, as you can imagine. And then align, align the four, or align with the other four elementary schools, figure out a way to help and support families to deal with the 30-minute swing as the schedule would line up to the other four elementarys. And the board, just some of the questions that the Board of Education has asked, and this is really important, because, you know, for the seven Board of Education members, nobody wants to be having this conversation, I know that. Is it necessary? Is there another way? That was the first question. Can we figure out another way to come up with the $2 million? Can we cut from another area in the organization without really injuring the overall academic program? Is there, are there enough efficiencies that we can cobble together to fill the gap? What about one more year? Could we, could we keep it for one more year? Again, reasonable question, right? But also, we'd be facing the same scenario again. Can we work to make sure that after-school care in every building, especially Church Street, is available and without wait lists? Yes. Can we reconfigure the routes to maintain the present schedule at Church Street? Are there grant funds that we could access to be able to fill the gap and raise the money to cover the costs? And there aren't, unfortunately, there aren't. What we can do, what we can control, is trying to figure out a way to support families moving forward. And so before, after-care and wraparound services at all of our elementary schools, especially Church Street, we're working toward increasing the capacity, working with our providers, making sure that we're hiring now to have folks in place to be able to support the program, and if it expands next year, we want to make sure that it's based in every elementary school. This was a concern that was raised often, is that, you know, I don't want my child to have to go somewhere in the morning and then have to be transported back, and folks had made, you know, raised appropriate concerns about the number of buses on the road. The number of buses on the road will be fewer when the elementary schools are aligned. And we would intend to offer these services at the school, for those who wanted to take advantage of it at the school. I mean, you know, for folks who wish to continue to take advantage of other wraparound services, of course, that would remain unchanged. We also want to, and will, have the opportunity for earlier enrollment. So if people need to make changes, they can start planning for it now, and opening up the enrollment process in the spring that would be ready for September of 2025. As I mentioned, focusing on Church Street Elementary, making sure, making sure that, considering the change, and for Church Street and our Church Street community, that this would be new, making sure that they have all of the appropriate services and supports that they need, beginning in September of 2025. I mentioned having flexibility in the type of service you can access. Not everybody needs five days a week, morning and afternoon, and we are working with our providers to be as flexible as possible to offer those services, and also at the consideration of costs. We want to make sure that these costs are as low as they possibly can be, because one dollar, and again, right, I understand, if it's a dollar that I didn't intend to spend next year, it's, it's an increase, and so it's a hardship, and we know that. And so what can we do then to try to keep those costs for folks who need to take advantage of those services as low as we possibly can? And additional community partners and opportunities, and we're not going to stop, you know, when folks come to me and they have a problem, try to figure out a way to help them, and we're going to do the very same thing in this circumstance. And I, I know, again, that this is not welcome news, but it's also the truth. And what I'm sharing with you is a very real problem, a very real fiscal challenge, the approach that we took and are taking to address that issue, and to try to minimize the overall systemic impact that that cost increase will deliver to the organization, because it is not just about today, it's about all the days forward in terms of preserving our overall program and the total fiscal health of the school district. You're going to hear a huge construction update, Capitol Projects update, in a moment. All of that work is being undertaken without increasing taxes, through planning, and that's what we try to do, to the best that we can. Now, we tried to plan for a big increase in transportation costs, and it even exceeded our prediction, our highest prediction of 40%. What will we be doing going forward? So moving forward, we will update the entire White Plains City School District community on the outcome of the work that we've done, what our anticipation is next year in terms of aligning all five elementary schools. We will continue to provide, and that update will come this week, we'll continue to provide budget updates to the community related to closing the gap for the $5 million existing. We will update the long-range plan to reflect the changes that need to happen this year, and also, dependent upon the executive budget, Governor Hochul- and also dependent upon the executive budget, Governor Hochul released it, then the One House when it comes later, what our projections will be for moving into the future, as well as coupled with any changes to foundation aid and the calculations for foundation aid and how they may impact the White Plains City School District. We'll present the long-range plan, we'll present the non-instructional budget, we will present the instructional budget, and then ultimately we'll present the proposed budget. And let me be really clear, and this is important. We'll not be recommending that we pierce the tax cap. I will not be recommending that we exceed the tax cap. What I will be recommending is that we all look for ways within this organization to realize efficiencies to protect our students' programming, and that may require some changes. That may require some changes. But what it also will do is it will make sure that the program that we love, the programs that our kids access every day, whether they be academic or extracurricular, the arts, athletics, extension opportunities, that they exist into the future. That is the most important thing that we can do. So, not welcome news, but it's the truth. And I will not recommend hearing that tax cap unless it was something that was catastrophic for our school district, then make no mistake about it, this is catastrophic for some of our home structures and some of our morning plans and routines. I understand that. I'm not minimizing that at all, but I also know that we're speaking to the entire community. Thanks for giving me your time, and I'll give you a moment to get back so if the board has questions.
Are we confident and, you know, optimistic that our community partners would be able to provide the childcare that we would need should changes occur for all of the schools?
We are. We've been meeting with Executive Director Williams, members of the White Plains Youth Bureau team, as well as other providers to make sure that we have a contingency in a number of areas in the space. What I can absolutely share with you and would talk about too would be that everybody understands the gravity of the situation, and everybody in the White Plains community is working to meet the needs of parents. I mean overwhelmingly, that's what we heard from parents and guardians. We certainly overwhelmingly heard that there was going to be an impact related to employment schedules and the like, but overwhelmingly secondary was the wraparound services. So everybody is moving right now to plan for September.
Other questions?
So first, thank you. This is not easy to hear, and we've been discussing it for a few months now, but thank you for the outline and rationale. My question is, you spoke about the greater White Plains community, so we've been targeting Church Street with our surveys and our conversations. When is the letter or communication going out to the wider community to inform them of what's been happening if they haven't been following the board meetings?
Yeah, it's funny you mention that because I was going to ask you after the meeting, we're going to have to pull that together fast, you know, and from the board. As soon as we can, we'd like to be able to get that out. We've roughed up, you know, of course, all of the supporting details for the board, and I would anticipate Dr. Teese this tomorrow, if possible.
And guess it's just a follow-up question. We've spent so much time on mental health and wellness with our students that when we do address this potential change, the impact academically and socially and emotionally with our students, what sort of services are, like, how are we going to deal with the impact on our students at specifically Church Street? That's who it will impact the most.
You mean if there was a negative impact on students in terms of their academic performance or their social, emotional well-being?
As a result of the change, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question. The school communities, again, you know, we're very fortunate here, right? Because every one of our elementary schools has guidance counseling services, support services, and so the school communities, of course, would be ready and willing to assist both children as well as parents and guardians if need be.
Specifically, the numbers of counselors we have at elementary schools, psychologists, we have...
Right, at least one everywhere. And we have additional that we can draw upon if we needed to at any particular minute.
From other schools.
Yep.
You, the cabinet, the board, we all play a balancing act as we have to take a view of what's best for the district as a whole while still being attentive to and addressing specific building level and individual needs. Given those lenses through which we responsibly budget and that the board, and let me just, I'm going to interrupt myself and just say that the board has read through and examined from, you know, every angle, all the data, all the information we've received through multiple perspectives. We've been influenced by the advocacy efforts and the feedback we've gotten. So again, given the lenses through which we have to budget, the board wants to ensure that every possible option has been considered, and so are there any stones that have been left unturned? And I will tell you that my husband and my kids will tell you this is the kind of question I ask all the time and I, you know, will ask repetitively. Is there anything that we haven't considered?
I really appreciate that question. In fact, we continually ask ourselves that, I feel like every day. If there is, we'll keep looking for it. You know, there's never a time where you want to be in a situation where delivering news like this that has a negative impact on families. You just don't want it. You don't want it, and you want to figure out a way and avoid it at all costs as you possibly can. So even though right now, you know, we're making, I'm making a recommendation, it doesn't mean I'm going to stop looking for efficiencies. It doesn't mean we're going to stop looking, you know, for ways to address the challenge. It's not like, you know, okay, that's over. And that's important for our community, I think, to hear because, you know, it's important that we share every bit of information that we can, and it's also important that we remain open to not only feedback but constructive criticism, to hearing about this from folks and their displeasure, to being challenged to explore other options. And so as I stand here, yes, I don't, if I had identified a way, I would share that with you, and I'll also tell you that we're going to keep looking.
My question is, I know there's been concern about potential overcrowding with the buses as a result of the consolidation. Is that a concern that we have going forward once there's less buses and the roads have been consolidated?
Really, we work on balancing the buses, especially at the beginning of any academic year, for two, if we're lucky, two weeks. If we're unlucky, it could be longer. In this new agreement, those types of considerations and concerns were laid out for all in the RFP because we want this service, you know, this is a service that the White Plains community, the White Plains City School District is paying a lot of money for, and we want it to be an excellent service. So all of the buses are going to be new buses. All of the buses are going to have all of the present-day safety measures and features within them, whether it be GPS technology, whether it be camera technology, whether it be Zonar technology, making sure we know who's on the bus, who's getting off the bus, where they're getting on, where they're getting off, all of that. And that will help to make sure that all of the buses are appropriately leveled for ridership, but that will be a daily process as well. And so throughout the school year, if some buses are of lower ridership, we'll be able to make changes to the number of buses on routes. If we needed to address a situation where there was overcrowding, as we have done in the past, we will have that ability to do it within the contract. The service should be better in terms of the student's experience in the vehicle. There will also be, as I mentioned, fewer buses on the road. So in terms of just, you know, day-to-day traffic around town, that should help. But most importantly, for safety, yes, we will absolutely be able to accommodate all of our children who choose to ride the bus.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I'm not sure.
Okay. So, I mean, I had a lot of the same questions that have already been asked, but, and I hear your comment about not wanting to recommend the piercing of the tax cap. Understandable. If we were to consider, and this might be an "and" question, if we were to consider piercing, that is probably a convoluted process. Are we able to do that in time for an upcoming school year?
You could put a budget, that's a good question. So no, it's not a bad question, and it's not at the wrong time. You could put forward a proposed budget that would exceed the tax levy cap limit. Yes, you could do it. You do risk, of course, a great deal in that process. One of the things you risk in that process is, so one of the things that I've also heard from folks is that this is something that needs to be done. It was in an audit that told you that this is an efficiency that can be realized. And when I say folks, I mean community members, call me out, right? And so the expectation is you're going to do it, and you weigh that, just like you weigh, you know, don't do it. I definitely, though, also understand folks whose primary concern is the overarching school district and the entirety of the program. And so for those folks, you know, the message was you need to do what is going to be the fiscally appropriate, fiscally prudent, and fiscally responsible thing to do, and you also need to then figure out how you can help the families who need the help. So you could, but the response to a budget that exceeds the tax cap for this particular purpose, I think would be very risky.
And what would, I'm sorry, can I follow that up? What would be, what would happen if we couldn't get 60% of the city to agree of having a budget that doesn't pass?
Yeah. The good news is in the state of New York, you would get another opportunity to put forward a budget, and the likelihood that we would be standing exactly where we are right now is extraordinarily high. Because one of the things that the Board of Education, I would imagine, one of the things that the Board of Education would be looking to do would be to identify what puts you over exceeding the tax cap. This would put you over exceeding the tax cap. And, you know, you could argue, well, again, fine $2 million somewhere else in the organization. You have a big budget. Find $2 million somewhere else. And then we would be also having a conversation about the negative impact, which because it's a hypothetical, could be larger, that that would then incur. So best recommendation, most conservative in the sense of what will be most fiscally responsible, what can we do to make sure it's the most sustainable solution for the future so that we don't have to revisit this conversation again, is what I'm putting forward. That's a good question. Anybody else?
Joe, Madam President, I would just like to make a comment.
The White Plains Board of Education and all school boards have two primary constituencies. First, our students, who we are responsible for educating, and the taxpayers who financially support the students' education. It is the responsibility of the school board to represent both of these groups to the very best of our ability. The taxpayers of White Plains have been, and we hope will continue to be, very strong supporters of our school district as we endeavor to provide the very best education for our students through continuous improvement. Like all complex organizations, our school district is ever-changing and focused on meeting the evolving needs of all. Representing both of these constituencies is a balancing act. Dr. Ricka and his team have done an admirable job preparing budget after budget that allow our students the very best opportunity to learn and upon graduation from high school to lead productive lives in whatever they choose to do, while at the same time being fair and responsible to the taxpayers. As you have seen in Joe's presentation and the questions asked by my fellow board members, we have spent a great deal of time listening to our community members who shared feedback and perspective, as well as thinking of creative and out-of-the-box solutions to a very real financial challenge. As Joe has mentioned, this is not a conversation that any of us want to have. However, it's a conversation that we must have as a challenge before us requires action in a manner that will best meet the needs of all of our students throughout the entire White Plains School District. Simply put, the cost of transportation for our students under the new busing contract will increase the expense side of the budget $2.8 million annually. This increased expense means we would need to cut existing programs and/or services in other parts of the school district or increase the 2025-26 proposed budget by $2.8 million, causing property taxes to increase above the New York State statutory tax cap limit and require a supermajority of 60% voter approval for the budget to successfully pass. This is an action that cannot be taken casually, and as Dr. Ricka said, should be avoided if there is an alternative. We have worked very hard trying to come up with an alternative that does not include changing school hours for Church Street. Again, none of us take disrupting any family's daily schedule lightly. We understand that many of our Church Street families are not pleased with this outcome. We agree. However, cutting existing programs or services or exceeding the tax cap are not viable, sustainable alternatives to maintain the 30-minute earlier start and end times to the school day at Church Street. As we've seen in the presentation, there are many initiatives the school district and our partners are working towards to minimize the negative impact of the change in every way we are able. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Well, you know, and again, I just, I would like to thank everybody who took the time to share feedback, offer, he thought, partners to offer potential avenues of exploration, and also to our community partners who are stepping up to make sure that we are able to fill, to the extent that we are able, any gaps that have been created by aligning all five elementary schools to the same start and end times. Madam President, as I had mentioned, if it's okay with the board, we could do public comment, we can move into public comment for folks who might want to, and then we can come back to superintendent's report for the capital improvement update.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're at the point in our agenda for public participation. We would ask that anyone wanting to make public participation, please step to the podium on my right here, your left, and state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. There is a maximum timeline, time limit of 25 minutes for public comments. I would like to add that although we don't directly respond to individual comments during the public meeting, all comments are heard, documented, and noted for further investigation and follow-up. The superintendent and the cabinet can discuss concerns with you directly, one-to-one, as part of the follow-up process. Please know that we do value all feedback. Please note that we do value all feedback and will work with you to ensure timely follow-up to your questions and concern. Is there any public participation?
Hello, here again. I'm sure you all recognize me at this point. Julia Oliva, 175 Trenton Avenue. I have just seen this presentation for the first time, so my thoughts are going to be just kind of based on what we heard, but I do think that the opposite perspective is very much needed here. When you say, by you, I mean the superintendent, Ricker, when you say reduce the existing expenditures, without any real examples, just sounds intentionally ominous, and frankly, in my opinion, is fear-mongering. We have been asking for other options for what could be cut since September. And even with this presentation tonight, we have no real options. Why is this taking so long? Shouldn't this have been considered before this option to change CSS hours was put on the table? Or maybe, just maybe, the thinking was that this change would go under the radar and no other options would have to be given? Something to think about, something for the White Plains community to think about. I want to make clear this proposed change would be on the backs of Church Street families. Before care will not be for free. Even if enough become available, it will be at a cost. And as a reminder, 61% of CSS families are economically disadvantaged. So, while I'm glad the district can balance its budget as a result of this change, what about CSS families and their budgets? Should they not eat? Should they not pay rent? Something to think about. But, but please, continue just to worry about the taxpayers, which we also are. Clearly, there is no concern for that, and at the end of the day, our children. I also want to say I'm hearing random numbers. When we first had a presentation by the superintendent at our PTA meeting, he said it was a 2.2 million cut, or over, over expense for the new transportation. Now I'm hearing 2.8 million. What is it? I'm concerned that we're not getting straight budget numbers. And what I'll also keep in mind is something I've said to the Board of Ed and something I've said to the superintendent. Many of our families have one car or no cars. So, now you're taking away their transportation. You're going to offer before care. Awesome. Possibly. Right now, there's wait lists. How do you expect those children to get to before care? Please, give me a response. No, you can't respond. How will they get to before care? There's no answer to that. So, when the question was asked, have you overturned every stone, looked at every issue? No, you haven't. You also have not fully addressed the overcrowding and the lack of monitors that will be on those buses. Have you also let all the elementary, elementary schools know that more students will be on the bus and that kids will be on the buses for longer? I think they'd want to know that. Thank you.
Good evening. Krista Williams, 109 North Broadway. I had something prepared, but in lieu... Oh, sure. A little short. Got it? Better? Okay. Krista Williams, 109 North Broadway. I had something fully prepared. I have spoken at a board meeting in October, and I am disappointed in how this information has been rolled out since September. So, now I need to gather my thoughts. I do urge and request that Dr. Ricker and the board come to Church Street and give us this presentation in person. Talk to the families, because we are not getting information. This should have been publicized, that this presentation and this discussion would be here tonight, and it was not. We might have more people representing. Our families speak to us. We have our 377 signatures signed in opposition of this. From, in 48 hours, it was over 200. The last signature was today, four hours ago. I can give you a name of every one of those people, and now we will open it up to the rest of White Plains. Because now you said you have data showing the rest of White Plains is okay with it, the school districts, the teachers, the parents of other schools. Our petition could be open to them, too. We have the emails, and we will do that and bring you information. We need transparency, which you are not giving us. We have been ousted from the Youth Bureau two years ago. It is a significant change in a family's budget to go from a family Youth Bureau to the YWCA or the YMCA. Huge, huge increase. And now you want us to put our kids there at 7:15 in the morning and pay another... My family alone will be paying over $5,000 a month in before and after care in a city school district that does not have in-house after-school. I am from, I work in Portchester. I am from Portchester. We have our own after-care in our school buildings, open to everybody for $150 a month. This is not equitable across the board for families, and you keep putting it on us. We're not asking for anything. We're protecting what we already have.
Speak into the microphone, okay? Sorry, I'm too tall, but my voice is loud enough. I'm Bessa Zabeli, 12 Westchester Ave. I'm actually really proud to be here because I've been alumni and I graduated from White Plains High School, and I know graduated, actually, with some of the children of the, of the, Mrs. Eller, hello. I always knew I was, when I have children, I would move back to White Plains, because this was the best, I always believe and still believe, this is the best place to raise your, your children, and I stand by this till the very end, and I was actually living in Europe when I unfortunately had to move back to New York with my son alone due to a failed marriage. But the one thing that I looked forward to the most was coming back to White Plains, because I knew that this was the, the, a safe place, the diversity, the love, the culture, everything. I am a single mom now for four years, and when I heard that this change was going to happen, I, my, I know that my whole life will be turned upside down. I unfortunately don't, I don't have any other option. And so, Dr. Ricker, respectfully, you, you mentioned the needs of the families, but this doesn't, this doesn't fulfill any of my needs. And are you prepared to fulfill the needs that I would need as a single parent? We chose Church Street because of the time. It works perfectly with my schedule as a single mom. Ours gets on the bus at 7:40. I take the 8:04 train to the city. Do I have to risk now my dream job? In the beginning, Mrs. Eller mentioned that the mission in White Plains is to, for the students to find their dream place. I work for the United Nations. If it wasn't for White Plains School District, I wouldn't be where I am right now. Everything in my life comes back to White Plains. And so, if this change is going to happen, Dr. Ricker, are you, are you prepared to meet my, my personal needs, and I'm sure of the needs of so many parents for that before-school care? Because for me, this isn't going to work at all. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing if this change happens, what you will do for me and for all the parents, but especially for single parents. Thank you.
This, this is hard. This is a hard conversation, but I, I have to say, on behalf of all of us, we hear you, and I'm sure the, the superintendent and the cabinet also hear you, and we do appreciate hearing from you. Thank you. That'll close.
Thanks, President Eller, and, and just, and again, thank you to, to our community members, and, and you, you mentioned it before. You mentioned it before. Yes, I, I would be willing to speak with anybody about their individual circumstances and try to partner and problem-solve the best I can. And also, there, there is limitations, and I recognize that, but I will always try to exceed what those limitations may be and try to find a way. So, I appreciate the, the comments. I appreciate, again, all the feedback and, and offer my thanks. I do, I do also want to, before I turn it over to our, our facilities update, I do want to also mention that we have members of the faculty and staff who are here with us this evening late, and thank you, who are going to be recognized on this evening's agenda for tenure. And there's going to be a big recognition, of course, at the, toward the end of the academic year, where we're all going to come together and celebrate together in beautiful spring weather. But I do also want to draw attention to Ms. Flores, who's a member of White Plains High School, a teaching assistant. Mr. Daniel from Eastview, Dr. Berger, Ridgeway, Ms. Vargis, Post Road, Mr. Beavis, district-wide phys ed and coach. All right, Mr. Beavis. And, and Ms. Metz as well, from GW, and you're, yay, all right, great. So, so it's coming. It's coming. You're on the agenda. It'll be here. The guys told us that this is going to be a holiday version of the capital update. All the good stuff. It's all good stuff. Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
I was saying how we started all this work, about $120 million worth of work, back in 2018, and planning, and planning, and planning, and the successful approval of the projects back in '22. And so, we continue to move forward. So, I'm happy to present the team, our architects, H2M, and Triton Construction, our, our construction management company, and Javier Hernandez, our director of facilities, and Frank Stefanelle, our former director. You know, everybody just working together, along with the board and the superintendent, to really continue to make this come to fruition.
Hi, everybody. Chris Pearson with Triton Construction, also here with Vice President Triton, Tae-Suk Boog, and Senior Project Manager Bob Furnice. The HVAC infiltration projects we're at, there's seven jobs in total. The first, we call the first five that are essentially done, and those are Church, GW, Eastview Highlands and High School. Those, all the work has been done. There, we've mentioned this at some previous board meetings, there is a little bit of communication back and forth between the controls version and the controls that are within the equipment, okay? And that's limited to those two vendors, okay? And, and what happens is there's some communication problems and a, and a couple overheating problems. I want to tell the board that this is a, this is a small percentage of, of the project, okay? They're about, installed, I think, roughly 325 new units throughout the school district. We're down to, in terms of things causing issues in, in a single-digit percentile at this point, and we're meeting regularly every Tuesday with both those two vendors, the equipment vendor and the controls vendor, and we're going to get through it. We're close. And then finally, the last two projects, which, which started later, Ridgeway and Mamaroneck, they were bid later, awarded later. All of that infrastructure work is essentially done and has gone well. The biggest, there was a switchgear delivery, which we knew about, lead time issue. So, the switchgear is coming for both those schools at the, in January of '25. As soon as the switchgear is here, Ridgeway can start right away and, and, and finish the completion. And Maroneck's, I'm sorry, I have it reversed. Maroneck can start right away, and we should have AC available to start testing in the spring. At Ridgeway, because the switchgear is in the same exact spot, you have to take out the old switchgear, put in a new switchgear, so AC is not going to be available at Ridgeway until the summertime, once, when school's out. In terms of all the projects that were undertaken over the summer, they are in the process of getting punch-listed by, by H2M. The punch list being addressed by the contractors and going into the final closeout. And that's for the fields and the track, the, all the, the ceiling and lighting replacement in the high school, the new bathrooms at George Washington. And the punch list for each of those projects that we just ran through is, is minimal. So, we're, we're in a spot to close all those jobs out. Again, this is a repeat slide we've seen before, just the before and after of the Damon House demolition. That fence will remain up to support the, and contain the new construction, so, so that will be there when, when the new work starts. And then finally, with all these la, these projects then closed out, there is some final negotiation on either open change orders and/or processing of credit change orders for allowances that weren't used. And we don't, we don't see anything. We actually see it all sorting itself out with no, nothing substantial to report. In terms of the recent bidding and bidding projects, we opened, the district opened bids for the four elementary school renovation projects, a church, GW, Mamaroneck, and Ridgeway. A combination of, you know, a little bit different work at each, at each school, the corridors flooring, the cafeteria at Church Street, cafeteria and gymnasium ventilation at GW, corridors flooring, roofing, library and cafeteria upgrades at Mamaroneck, and the library and cafeteria upgrades at Ridgeway. The bids all came in on the, opened on November 20th. All, all the bidders got scoped out and found responsible under budget, under budget for the projects, and all, all bidders and recommended contractors that have either done work within the district or H2M or Triton. So, I, this is, this is all great news. And, okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Joe.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph Serrano from H2M. Just going to talk through some of the projects that are currently in wrapping up design or pre-construction. So, that includes some Phase 2 upgrades at the high school, air handlers, project lead the way, corridor widening, security improvements, and ADA accessibility. We're currently working with the district and evaluating scope and costs with the construction manager through the design process. At Rochambeau, the alterations in the HVAC project are submitted to the state. There, again, we're reevaluating the scope of work of renovations to be performed, again, with the goal ultimately of applying cost savings to the overall budget, and certainly the larger project of the high school addition, and then the high school addition itself. So, when we last presented, we had touched on a shortfall in building aid from what SED has recently projected compared to what was estimated pre-bond. Since then, we've had extensive coordinations with both the district, SED, and BOSIS. We've worked on revising a design program and layout of the addition to maximize aid from the state within the addition itself. We're in the process of finalizing that and executing reapplication paperwork, then we will then resubmit to SED for a complete estimate on the building aid. Once, once we resubmit, we anticipate turnaround pretty quickly, because again, the overall construction documents for that project have been reviewed and approved. We're waiting on final project manager sign off with the state, but we anticipate a quick turnaround once the preliminary submission is, is re, resubmitted and SED calculates their aid. We're also discussing open construction schedule considerations with both the district and the construction manager. Certainly, our initial plans had this project out to bid within the calendar year of 2024. Being that we are a bit behind that projected schedule with state approvals, we're going to be looking at adjusting the construction schedule moving forward, and should have more information once we receive a final approval from the state. And then to touch on the, the building aid discussion once more, so to go back, as we had mentioned, we had a, a anticipated, an unanticipated shortfall in building aid between the original estimate and where the state came back. By working with the district and replacing some non-instructional or administrative space within the new addition with instructional space, and that's a combination of general classroom and special education spaces, we're looking to maximize building aid within the addition. That combined with the, the cost savings from the elementary school projects, the current projects under construction, as well as looking to scale back the scope and scale of renovation at Rochambeau, we are confident that those cost savings will be applied towards the high school, so that, and the combination with the increase in building aid that we are designing, we'll be able to accommodate the budget that we anticipate having.
So, you said lower, building, BAU significantly lower, or just?
So, yeah, so we don't...
Initially, that was very...
Yeah, no, it, it, the, the initial estimate was, I should say, the initial estimate and what we received back from SED was significant. We're able to likely cut that gap in, in half, I would say. We don't have final numbers yet, but by replacing the non-instructional spaces within the addition with the instructional spaces, as well as taking some special education programming from the existing high school and reloading it, relocating it to the addition, we're able to maximize the adable units of the addition itself.
And just quickly, instructional spaces, are we talking like four-wall classrooms?
No, excellent question. So, yeah, so, so within the addition, we had some space identified for potentially an IT office, union offices, that the district has been able to accommodate space in. in other buildings. So now that we, it's not a password, now that we, um, have replaced those spaces with instructional spaces, the non-instructional spaces don't generate any building aid. So now that we are representing that same square footage with adable or instructional spaces, we are able to increase the aid available from the state for the new addition.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can you comment, um, more specifically, on why the building aid ended up being lower than expected?
Sure.
As well as, I, I couldn't tell from these diagrams how they differed from the plan previously in terms of instructional and non-instructional spaces, so I don't know if there's something else you can send us which would be more indicative of where the changes have taken place.
Yeah, absolutely, we could. If, if, uh, if we are able to get the screen back up, I can, I can show you between the two slides. But to go back to your first part of the question, so the, the concept program that was developed for the addition pre-bond, so we're talking 2021 to 2022, had a certain, um, amount of, um, building programming. When I say program, I mean classroom spaces, um, instructional spaces, et cetera. Post-bond and throughout the design process, that program modified. Some classroom or instructional spaces were moved or scaled back as we were working through the updated budgets of the addition. So the initial concept program that we estimated the building aid off of might change somewhat significantly to what was ultimately, uh, designed and agreed upon to fit within budget. Now, when we submit to the state, they came in much lower than even we anticipated with those difference in programs, and we, and we've worked and have coordinated with SED on spaces that we feel they either missed or didn't calculate appropriately. Those spaces, along with replacing the non-instructional spaces with the instructional spaces, we are confident will, uh, make up a good amount of the, the building aid unit that we feel the state missed on their first review.
I do need to, um, just share with the board and, SED and, and the team at the State Education Department has been really tremendous in working with us and, and coming together and working, and working with the full team. I know that Commissioner Rosa, as well as the Regents, um, as well as the governor, as well as, as well as, as well as, are all very, very interested in making sure that there is, there is a rebirth of career technical education opportunities that are directly connected with secondary education all throughout the state and New York, as well as the nation.
Correct.
And so they have really been helping us.
Yes.
To make sure that this gels in, in partnership as well, the Southern Westchester BOCES. Um, and so that, that, I think, went along, we, you know, we had a great meeting where we were able to kind of talk, you guys were able to talk through, um, you know, and, and massage those, uh, those plans, um, and so that, that was really beneficial, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank SED.
Have they changed their methodology, SED?
Well, that, well, now, they have the independent reviewers again, are back, but we missed that.
Right.
But this was an actual opportunity for us to meet directly with them and talk to them about our plan and our vision.
Went through great detail. The Finance Council went through great detail, um, with the committee, with the team, uh, last month, so we'll resend that presentation, which was very specific, um, and really showed those diagrams and plans.
The reason I'm smiling is because you can't see it on TV, but I'm looking at the guys in the booth, they're telling me I'm doing a terrible job. Microphone to you.
Uh, but to go back to answer your question, if, if you could, uh, focus your attention on the screen for a moment, so, um, just a simple diagram, and I know these are at small scale, we can certainly send for, for your review. These are, this is the design of the addition, I'll say, pre-, pre-program revision. So on the left side, we have the ground floor plan, the right side, the first floor plan. Um, left side of the page, the, the top portion of the addition was earmarked for, uh, family information center offices, a potential IT office suite, and a, I'll say vanilla box space for a future, future medical build-out. The modifications we made are replacing those non-instructional spaces with a combination of general classroom and special education spaces. These general classrooms are oversized for what a typical classroom could be, so that they could potentially accommodate a career and technical education type program, um, either with, in, in coordination with BOCES, or if the district in the future is able to implement a, a program like that on their own, but those are the, the modifications. So if I, if I go back, you'll see the current layout, and you'll see the modifications that were made, uh, to both floors.
Yeah, so we could send sort of before and after.
Sure. Yeah, not a problem. And, uh, that takes us through it, folks, so I appreciate the time. I'm happy to answer any other questions if you have.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Have a great holiday, guys.
You too. Happy holidays, everyone.
Next, we're going to move, move to our summary, um, action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
Second.
I'm going to read this really fast and with great gratitude, because this is amazing. Uh, item B, donations. My goodness. Follow me on this. $1,500 donation for Potro Publishing to buy supplies for the high school library program. A thousand dollars grant for White Plains High School Youth to Youth Club from the National Road Safety Foundation. A $500 donation for the Dr. Leonard G. Rhodes Memorial Fund from Donna Joseph. White Plains High School Key Club and Midnight Run have received several donations from the following sources. $2,500 donation from the Pantinelli family, Oakland Trading Corp. $300 donation from Scarsdale Police Benevolent Association. A $250 donation from the Professional Firefighters Association of the City of White Plains, New York Incorporated. A $200 gift cards donation from the White Plains Police Benevolent Association. A hundred and fifty gift card donation from the 1020, uh, Post Restaurant. A hundred and fifty gift card donation from the White Plains Hockey Team. A hundred dollar gift card donation from Free Bird Restaurant. A hundred dollar donation from Michelle Schoenfeld. Thank you, Mrs. Schoenfeld. A $50 gift card donation from the Klein family. A $50 gift card con-, uh, donation from student Leila Tomlin. Thank you, Leila. A $25 gift card donation from Maureen Nymphus. Thank you. A $25 gift card donation from student Belle Sepler. Thank you all so much. White Plains High School PTA donated $4,850 for the following. A thousand, two hundred dollar for the orchestra page turners. A thousand dollars for the sale art night. $985 for the Spanish probes. Eight hundred and ninety-five dol-, I'm sorry, science probes. Eight hundred and ninety-five dollar donation for the sp-, that's where it happened, Spanish class trip. Five hundred dollar donation from the ENL, uh, for the ENL culturally relevant books, and $270 donation for reusable headphones.
And the word is with gratitude.
There's more.
Yeah. Oh, there's more. Wait, wait, wait.
Uh, wait, there's more.
Oh, yes.
The following grants were donated by the Friends of White Plains. $18,000 grant for the Beyond Broadway Dance Program in all elementary schools. A $900 grant to the high school sale program for tickets for students to attend the performance of Hairspray at the WPPAC, White Plains Performing Arts Center. Thank you so much to everybody for your generous donations. Really, truly amazing. Um, we're grateful.
Are there any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I would, I really want to thank all of you for coming out this evening and for supporting all of our colleagues, um, and, and congratulations. I know it's a, a little bit later than normal, but thank you very, very much, everybody, for being here.
Thank you. Congratulations.
It's a pleasure.
Next? Next, we'll move on to individual action items. We have the recommended approval of the request for an extension as per CSEA contract of the paid period of absence beyond 30 working days due to an accident in the line of duty for employee 3286, effective November 18, '24 through December 13, '24, to include an additional third, 20 working days. May I have a motion?
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended approval of a resolution approving a stipulation of settlement in connection with impartial hearing reporting system case number 620317. May I have a motion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, this is quick. Next, we have the recommended, um, we have the recommended, um, approval of the sixth school election site at El Central Hispano for the May 20th, 2025 school election. The location is 295 Central Avenue in White Plains.
If I, if I may just offer the board and the community, um, the, the identification as El Centro Hispano as the voting site, uh, again, we're, we're grateful for El Centro's support. It is a polling place for general elections, and that, you may remember, this came from conversations related to the inability to access the community room, um, that was available to community members, um, for a long period of time, and then a subsequent conversation rel-, with, with the Neighborhood Association and members of the community on how we could bring a closer site for, for our, our community members in Battle Hill. Um, and I want to thank the, the Neighborhood Association and President Wilcox and, and all those folks for engaging with us. I'd also like to thank the Common Council members, um, for offering their support, and of course, El Centro Hispano, um, for, for opening their doors to us. We're really happy and, and happy that we were able to come to this.
Yep, thank you. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we will move into our board, um, oh, the field trip. I'm so sorry.
Mrs. is sorry, oh, Mr. Spedefimo.
I know, they were just coming, they were coming for me. You know what? I got a new prescription, too. I do, I have a new prescription. It should be in the, um, when I get home, at the door. Next, we have the recommended approval of an overnight field trip for Post Road Elementary School, fifth grade class, um, and this is.
Nature.
Yeah, nature's classroom. May I have a motion?
Second.
Question? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, have fun. Now, we can move to board committee. Did I miss something else?
No.
No?
So, I'll, I'll quickly go. We had curriculum earlier this week. Um, we had an awesome meeting where we had, um, various departments, uh, offer up some new course offerings and electives at the high school across multiple disciplines. Uh, robotics course, uh, for the high school, an intro to dance, which, uh, Mr. West was super happy about, as we put on the extension for the Performing Arts Center, to really have a robust performing arts program. Climate and the human impact elective, we have a dual language in Global One. Uh, government and economics of food sounded really interesting as well, and a financial literacy course would be offered as well. And this is all with very, with no cost to the district and just some reworking of, um, yeah, moving parts. But yeah, we're very excited to see how more options for our children in terms of electives. Legend Neutral is nice.
Right. You know, the instructional program and, and really the creativity, um, and forward-thinking, um, perspective of our faculty, of our staff, really thinking about what students need, what they want, what they're interested in. And if I can just add also, um, embedding even more civics into the social studies curriculum, and it's really very gratifying, because I remember several years ago, being at a Westchester Putnam School Boards Association presentation on civics, and I brought back a lot of materials to, to the district. And that really, I, I think, there was some impetus at that point. We had a social studies, uh, curriculum review, and we really started working on, um, putting more civics back into our, you know, program. And, um, and then being part of the pilot program for the seal of civic readiness. And so when I have heard from other school districts around the state bemoaning the lack of civics education, it's really, it's, it's a point of pride that here in White Plains, we're taking this very, very seriously, and we're always looking for opportunities to expand. So I'm, I'm really appreciative of that.
Um, we also had finance. Craig, do you want to speak to that?
No. Uh, last week, we had a financial audit committee meeting when our claims auditor and our internal auditor, um, visited the committee to give an update on, um, various workings that they're doing for the school district.
Okay. Thank you. And also, we had special education.
Yes, we had special education committee where we visited, uh, three self-contained classrooms at Church Street School, grades K through two, um, another kindergarten class, and grades three and four, or three through four, to observe the teachers and the students and see how important, the importance of the classroom setup to provide a predictable environment and routines, and why it's important for both students and teachers to create a productive, safe learning and working environment. Um, so it was interesting to see, and to see the students and the teachers and, um, uh, at Church Street, and it was a very, um, enlightening day for me, because I hadn't seen that before, I hadn't had the chance to, um, visit a classroom before, a self-contained classroom. Um, and now we're going to visit the Highlands and White Plains High Schools, uh, classrooms as well, to see how this progresses into the secondary education years.
Can I just add for special education, um, that, uh, there was a meeting that was held for the transition from CPSE to CSE, the Committee on Preschool Education, and the Committee on Special Education, for those families who have incoming kindergarteners who have been part of that CPSE process, and it was really well-attended, um, and I think very much appreciated. It was a very, very clear presentation, so families, um, know what, what to expect. Um, and can I also comment on the wellness, uh, the, the safety committee? And, uh, the board did receive the recording of that meeting, so I won't say very much about it, but, um, Jeremy from Altaris is our liaison, and, um, they are really doing, you know, an excellent job, along with Dr. Vikara Teich, um, and really did, you know, sort of updates. Um, there's been training for, you know, threat assessment procedures, zero eyes, more coordination, um, you know, with the police. There's been stair chair training. There have been updated maps of our buildings at the, you know, with input from the fire department. Um, health and wellness, um, you know, there's lots of walking pneumonia going around, um, if you haven't noticed. Um, and we do have a supply of masks and COVID tests, if God forbid, you know, they're needed in the future.
Okay, thank you. Next, Dr. Vikar. Any more?
Okay. So before, um, before we, we head into executive session, I would like to just, first of all, for all of our colleagues who are here who received tenure on this evening's agenda, would you just please stand to be recognized? We orchestrated the meeting to be a little bit longer to see if you had the grit. And I also would like to just congratulate, I know she's here this evening, as well, Ms. Brittany Graham. Uh, congratulations. You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Before we, before we move to go into exec, um, thank you, John, Ms. Savage, in the audio booth. I don't know.
Joe.
Joe. Joe, thank you too, Joe. Thank you. Just thank you both, um, for your, your work tonight. And without further ado, may I have a motion to enter into exec session to discuss matters of a personnel, uh, negotiation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
[applause][1783.98]